Motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
There was second.
A second.
Second by Barbara, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. We have an approved agenda. Now, the minutes from the February fourteenth meeting, has everybody had a chance to review those?
Yes.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve. There were some amended minutes. There was a change. Everybody got that?
Moving to approve the amended minutes.
Got it.
All second?
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we have some approved minutes from the February meeting. And then the first item on the agenda, new business. This is a rezoning, a conventional rezoning on Brooklyn Ave. And Mr. Matthew Manley is going to talk to us about that.
Good afternoon. Our first item. Brooklyn Avenue. That's in Martin Hayes. This particular subject property is at the corner of Brooklyn Avenue and Old Spartanburg Road. And also has a a small alley closer to Spartanburg Highway called Edith Drive.
The property is partially zoned C three currently, portion closer to Spartanburg Highway, and I'll provide a zoning map here in a minute. That C three portion is right at two thirds of an acre. The remaining the remainder of the parcel is one point six acres is currently zoned R fifteen. The total property is two point two six acres, and they are requesting that it all be rezoned to C three. The future land use designation for this property is Neighborhood Activity Center, and it is located in an activity node. As you can see from the current zoning map, it is a mix of C three and R fifteen. Primarily, there is a hard break in this specific area at Old Spartanburg Road. East of Old Spartanburg Road is R fifteen with some PRD. West of Old Spartanburg Road, you have this mix with it becoming all C three along the Spartanburg Highway corridor. You can see the subject parcel, which is split zoned currently. And again, they're wanting to extend that C three zoning all the way to the Old Spartanburg Road side of the property. So with a standard rezoning such as this, there is no site plan. There is nothing that would be specific about any development that would be occurring on this site. And it would, they wouldn't be bound to any specific uses or type of development. So what we are considering is the appropriateness of rezoning from R fifteen to C three. And what would be permitted if it were to be rezoned is all of the uses under C three. So understanding those that use comparison is really important in considering the impacts of the rezoning. This slide here shows everything that's in green is found in both zoning districts. So everything listed under R fifteen that is green is also found in C three. What is listed under C three on this slide is where there's some slight deviation. So there are maybe not slight, but a type of use that resembles use that's permitted within C three and R fifteen, but there's some distinction. So I'll go through those very quickly. Adult care homes and adult care centers and childcare homes and childcare centers. So you have adult care and childcare in both. However, the residential zoning district is for six individuals or less. In the C three commercial district, the adult care and childcare for six individuals or more, or more than six individuals. And the childcare center in C three is by special use only. Similarly planned residential minor PRDs are permitted at three point seven five units per acre under R fifteen. That bumps up to eight point five units per acre under C three. I will distinguish that multifamily is not a permitted use in the C three. So the minor PRD could not include multifamily, but it could include single family, two family, townhomes, single family attached up to eight point five units per acre. Religious institutions under fifty thousand square feet under R fifteen, and there is no square footage cap under C three. And those are the 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 primary differences between the two. Where there are some similarities and uses. Where there is not similarities and uses is this slide. Everything in red is found in the C three, but not in the R fifteen. So you see an abundance of commercial uses of a significant uptick in intensity between the R fifteen and the C three as represented here on this slide. The dimensional standards for each district are shown here. There is residential standards in the C three. They are for smaller, more, more. They allow for more density in the minimum lot size. The setbacks are reduced compared to R fifteen. And of course, the minimum lot sizes for non-residential commercial uses are only found in the C three since there are no commercial uses in the R fifteen. When taking a look at the site, if you're standing at Edith Drive facing east, northeast, the upper left picture would be the view you would have. You can see there's currently some arborvitae that surrounds the property at the intersection of Old Spartanburg. So the bottom left picture is standing in the middle of the site, looking towards the intersection of Old Spartanburg in Brooklyn. And you can see how those trees currently surround the site. Upper right picture is if you're at the front of the site facing Brooklyn. And so the power lines that are running down the left side, those are following that Edith Drive right of way. So Edith Drive is to your left, and the remainder of the site would be to the right. And the bottom right, you're standing in the center of sight, and you're facing towards Spartanburg Highway, towards Edith Drive west, as you can see from the sun setting. Under the future land use, I mentioned that the designation is Neighborhood Activity Center, and it is right in the heart of an activity node, which is right around Brooklyn and Shepherd Street's intersection with Spartanburg Highway. There is a hard break from Neighborhood Activity Center to high intensity neighborhood that follows Old Spartanburg Road. So you see that transition from the intense commercial uses along neighborhood in the Neighborhood Activity Center to the mix of uses and more dense residential development that is recommended in the high intensity neighborhood. So looking at that designation a little bit further, I will note at comprehensive plan consistency is this this next section of the presentation, comprehensive plan consistency is one of six criteria that is reviewed when making a recommendation for a rezoning. And I'll get into the other five as well, but the first one is comprehensive plan consistency. And so, as I mentioned, Neighborhood Activity Center. Those are to be located along major intersections. And in this case, this this meets those that criteria. The recommended land use is neighborhood retail, sales and services. C three is highway retail. So it could permit neighborhood scale, but it doesn't necessarily restrict it to just that neighborhood scale of retail and sales and services. Offices, secondary land uses, offices, multifamily, live work units, mixed uses. Those are all recommended. Multifamily, as I mentioned, is not permitted in the C three. So we've labeled that as inconsistent. The development guidelines and the activity node. What we find here is that there's these design goals. And with the C three, there are no design standards. So there are portions of the recommended or the guidelines that are found in the comprehensive plan that we cannot ensure would be met because we don't have design standards. We also don't have a site plan. So there's no way to to ensure that we would meet those goals of the comprehensive plan. So now I'll go through the other chapters and and what we have here is kind of a synopsis, the purpose statement for each chapter in the comprehensive plan. And for land use and development, I'll just point out that it is designated as a priority infill area in our growth management map. And we have strategies related to encouraging infill development and redevelopment in these areas. We encourage infill development that will utilize existing infrastructure in order to maximize public investment and revitalize existing neighborhoods. And as we get into population and housing, we have some similar goals. One is to promote compatible infill development and encourage mixed land uses and land use patterns that place residents within walking distance of services. We also have promoting safe and walkable neighborhoods and maintain and enhance older neighborhoods so that they retain their value and viability in the face of demographic and market changes. The natural environmental resources, cultural and historic resources, community facilities and water resources. There were no specific goals or strategies that related to this specific request. Under transportation and circulation, there is another goal related to providing a mix of uses and pedestrian friendly types of development. So now we get into the other standards for rezonings. The next one is compatibility. And this looks at whether the weather and the extent to which the proposed amendment is compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the subject property. And so I've talked about the mix of R fifteen and C three in this area. And that RF fifteen is primarily found to the east of Old Spartanburg Road. There are parcels that are zoned C three or C three special use that extend all the way from Spartanburg Highway to Old Spartanburg Highway. And this is in an activity node where we tend to have more intense uses. It is at the corner of two minor thoroughfares. Change conditions, weather and the extent to which there are changed conditions, trends or facts that require an amendment. So in this area, we have had recently a final site plan approved for a car wash at the corner of Shepherd Street and Spartanburg Highway. There is the fire station parcel at the at Shepherd Street and Old Spartanburg, so this east of Old Spartanburg recently rezoned to C four, and there's some other C four just south of that. And as I mentioned, there's some other parcels in this general area that extends C three across from Spartanburg Highway to Old Spartanburg. So there has been some changing conditions. Public interest, weather and the extent to which the proposed amendments would result in a logical and orderly development pattern that benefits the surrounding neighborhood is in the public interest and promotes public health, safety and general welfare. In this case, the rezoning could allow for a wide range of commercial uses and residential, as I mentioned, the minor PRD uptick in density. And it's at the intersection of two minor thoroughfares where there's a steady flow of traffic. Public facilities, as I mentioned, there's existing infrastructure that could be utilized at this site. And effect on natural environment. The site has been used for outdoor storage. Beyond the trees that line the edge of the property, there's no significant environmental features that would be impacted. And we, you know, we've looked at the rating on the biodiversity and wildlife habitat assessment, and there's, as an urbanized area, there's, there's nothing of significance there. So this leads us to a comprehensive plan consistency statement, which I've provided here, essentially stating that the request is consistent, is found to be consistent with the Neighborhood Activity Center designation, which calls for neighborhood retail, sales and services as a primary recommended land use and office multifamily and other similar uses as secondary recommended land uses at locations which align with comprehensive plan for Neighborhood Activity Center. Provided some rationale for approval, which is listed here and was in your packet. There's also some rationale for denial, which relates back to some of the comments I mentioned related to design standards and the lack of a site. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Anybody on the board have any questions for city staff? During, you do?
No.
During our committee meeting, prior to this meeting, you mentioned that professional planners try not to break a zoning district at a road. Can you explain that?
Yes, so a best practice. And and it could depend on an area in town and different circumstances, but typically what you'll find is that the zoning or land use designation typically will not break at the street right of way. It would break at the back of the properties so that all of the properties or parcels facing onto a street have a similar character as you traverse that area. And that the to transition to another zoning district or a different zoning district, you would do that at the back of the property and transition out. So transitioning at a street, you know, can can be tough. Anytime there's a transition from commercial to residential, it can be difficult. Anytime a request to rezone from residential R fifteen to some intense commercial use is is difficult. Takes a lot of consideration. But I hope that makes sense and answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Now, at the discussion we had before this meeting, did you say that the owner would be able to make an exit onto Old Spartanburg?
It would require a driveway permit from NC DOT, but there there is frontage there. So there is the potential for access. It would have to be a certain distance from the intersection to be able to have some kind of access there. But I would imagine they have enough frontage there to potentially have an access point.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant in the room? Would you like to come up and speak? Come on up and state your name, your name and address. What I'd like to do, though, is if you do have plans for this property, do not, do not discuss those specific plans with us because this board needs to consider all of the uses within that new zoning district.
Right. Well, I do not have any plans.
Okay. That makes it easy.
Because I need to be able to plan and hopefully carrying on the C three to the back of my property. I can then investigate and explore what's going to fit the neighborhood and the area and see what people need there. And that's kind of where I'm at on it. I have been using it for some storage for some of my equipment and trucks. It's kind of what my dad did with it six, from sixty years ago up. So kind of hoping to kind of get it in the mainstream and see what I can get going on it and get some tax dollars rolling.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant? I have one. Do you know how it received split zoning?
I have no idea. I've played on that property since I was that tall. It's my dad's office used to be, he had a paving company at the corner of the highway and Brooklyn. And he always parked his equipment back there and trucks since he moved up here in fifty six from Polk County. So I have no idea how it was ever split zoned.
So I have a question for city staff. Then is it, is it one parcel or two parcels?
It's one.
One parcel.
One pin.
With two zoning.
That's correct. The yellow the the yellow outline on the screen is the
Is the single parcel. Okay.
Is the red, is the red one down here at the bottom? Is that outside of the city zoning?
That's correct. Outside the city limits.
Outside of the city.
Then the city's ETJ and
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing portion of of this particular agenda item. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak about this project to the planning board? How about on the Zoom call? If there's anybody on the Zoom call that would like to speak to the planning board about this proposed rezoning, go ahead and use the raise your hand feature, and we'll unmute you. Okay, so we've got, we'll go ahead and close the public comments portion. Any discussion? What are you thinking, Neil? You're smiling. What are you thinking?
You know me, I'm always smiling.
You'll just want dark skies.
Yeah, I just want dark skies, right. No, I have no problem with this at all. My, my only problem I was, as I looked at the property was why is this a Neighborhood Activity Center? It's not pedestrian friendly. There's no retail sales in this area.
It was a comp plan. We're trying to get there.
It's totally irrelevant to this discussion.
We're just not there yet.
Yeah, I have no problem at all with this proposal.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Barbara.
For me, in looking at the map, I was looking at all the residential homes behind this property that are fairly good sized lots. There's an apartment, and then there's homes that go all the way down to Shepherd. There's homes across the street on Brooklyn. And then there's your car dealerships. And if you open it up to a C three, you can put wide gamut of anything there. And not being able to know what that is or ask what is there, I would rather keep it as an R fifteen to protect the residents behind it from putting in a business that they may not want to see. We're here, we're smell.
Nobody in the neighborhood seemed to care enough to show up.
Well, I'm not just, that's my opinion.
I also kind of look at from the point of view of, we need commercial development somewhere. Is there a better spot than here? And it seems to make sense.
Yeah, I'm for it.
Yeah. And nothing personal, sir, but almost anything done to that lot will be an improvement.
Improvement.
Well, do we, do we have a motion then?
Use the draft.
Yes.
Rationale for approval. Petition would be an extension, this is C three zoning district and eliminate the split zoning of the subject parcel. The petition allows for increased intensity of uses at the intersection of two major thoroughfares. Petition would align with the parcels proximate to the subject property, which are zone C three and located between Old Spartanburg Road and Spartanburg Highway. Petition creates the opportunity for infill development at a greater density and intensity.
Okay, so that's your rationale. What's, do we have a motion?
We need a consistency statement as well. So the top of the page is on the
I have a printed copy. I move the planning board, recommend.
I move the planning board recommend city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property, a portion of pin number nine five seven eight dash four two S two three nine two from R fifteen medium density residential, C three highway business based on the following. One, the petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing and because the Neighborhood Activity Center designation calls for neighborhood retail, sales and services as a primary recommended land use and office multifamily and other similar uses as secondary recommended land uses at locations which align with those listed under LU eight dot one period. Two, we find addition, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis and public hearing is because one petition would be an extension of
You just read that already, right? So that's part of your motion. That's fine.
Yeah.
That's it. You're good.
Done. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to recommend city council adopt an ordinance amending the zoning. We have a consistency statement. Do we have a second?
A second motion.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes five to one. All right, let's move on to our second item on the agenda, which is a rezoning, a conditional zoning district for Schroder Honda expansion over near the interstate interchange.
I'll just, while Tyler's coming up, if you're ready to make a motion, I've direct you to the cover sheet. It's got the full language. The the part that's in the middle of the staff report is is really focused just on the consistency statement and rationale. Sorry.
It's just a, it's just a different format. We're just getting used to it. We like it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. This is a conditional rezoning application that we received. Let's see, so the location, it's an existing business. Schroder Honda, the applicants are actually Casey Schroder and Leonard and Catherine Schroder, who are the property owners and the applicant. The current parcel is own C three highway business. They are rezoning to C three C Z D due to the development involving more than fifty thousand square feet. So existing plus new is roughly like fifty three thousand seventy four square feet. So they are going over that trigger that's NC three C Z D to require this rezoning. As you can see on the map behind the text, this is shown as two parcels. Since the application was actually submitted, those two parcels have been recombined into one parcel, which is a little bit over four acres. So since this is a C Z D, there is uses tied to it, and they would have to stick to these uses. And the proposed uses for this rezoning is automobiles, automobile sales and services, offices, business, professional and public and retail. Like I mentioned, they are proposing a new two-story thirty two thousand nine hundred eighty five square foot expansion. They are retaining the two buildings they have on site today. And overall, it'd be a little bit over fifty three thousand square feet. The future land use designation for this property is Regional Activity Center, and it is actually just outside of an activity node. So the neighborhood compatibility meeting for this project, since it is a conditional zoning district, was held on January third, twenty twenty two. There was one person from the public attend. They attended virtually. Some of the questions about this rezoning was why is the rezoning having to go through the process? And which I mentioned about the fifty thousand square foot threshold, there were some questions about the height of the buildings. If we had any requirements for dark skylighting to be required. The commenter did show some support for the or the proposed rezoning because it would be an asset with an updated facility, but he did have questions about the rezoning. They also had concerns about the appearance of the building, existing conditions of the road and future roadway improvements. So the subject property is entirely embedded by C three highway business parcels. The subject property has a high visibility from Four Seasons Boulevard and the on-ramp for I twenty six east. The surrounding area is predominantly C three highway business due to its proximity to Four Seasons Boulevard. The uses in this area include a hotel, restaurant, gas station, bank, nonprofit funeral home, among some other residential uses that abut the C three, that it's actually NC three zoning and fronts on Sarasota Lane. The area to the south of the subject property is designated as R fifteen medium density residential and contains Camp Pinewood, which is a summer camp for children. Other districts that are in the general area are planned residential development, which is Carolina Village, and some residential commercial transition, which is kind of that purplish color down on the bottom of the map. Like I mentioned, there is a wide mix of uses in this area between commercial and residential, a lot of varying. But one thing is pretty clear that a lot of the commercial uses and even some of the residential uses are pretty high intensity uses. So this is some existing site photos. The top left shows the existing Schroder Honda building from the road. Top right shows an Uh, the top right shows an, an empty adjacent field, which was previously its own parcel, which is now a part of the one parcel. That's where some of the development will occur. And, uh, bottom left is an existing warehouse that will remain as, I believe, as a warehouse use. And then bottom right kind of shows the site distance, looking back towards Hendersonville from a lower portion of the parking lot, just to kind of show some site distances and kind of the topography change for that area. There will be a condition that's mentioned later on that kind of, um, highlights this. Now granted, when we get into that, this picture was taken further away from the portion we're actually talking about, but I'll get into that when we get to that, but just keep that in mind. Uh, so the subject property is designated as regional activity center on the twenty thirty comprehensive plans, future land use map. All parcels abutting this parcel are also designated as higher regional activity center. The designation reflects the commercial corridor along I twenty-six and US sixty-four. The area to the south is designated as business center. This area has this designation due to its size and its frontage along I twenty-six. All, all the parcels in this area have an intensity, high intensity future land use designation, whether it be residential, commercial or industrial. So like Matt mentioned in the previous presentation, uh, comprehensive plan consistency is one of the criteria that you have to consider when, um, recommending a rezoning for a property. This slide really breaks it down by chapter, and like he mentioned, it gives a synopsis of some of the criteria. So as I mentioned, this is regional activity center. What does that mean? What is the goal of that? So the goal of regional activity center is to meet the large scale retail needs of Hendersonville residents while encouraging mixed use, walkable design through redevelopment and infill projects. Uh, community and regional retail sales are primary recommended land uses under this designation. So this land use would align with those, or those recommendations. So for land use development, the land development chapter of the comprehensive plan designates this parcel as a priority infill area, which are areas that are considered of high priority for the city to encourage infill development on remaining vacant land lots and redevelopment on underutilized or underdeveloped properties. A portion of the property is identified as a development opportunity, which includes vacant land, agricultural land and single family residential properties on greater than five acres. Um, of course, as you can see, population housing really doesn't reflect anything with this proposal, so I'll skip over that one. And then natural and environmental resources. No trees on the side are currently over twelve inches in diameter. Um, twelve inches in diameter is really the threshold for when they're required to show them on a tree survey. There was no trees on the site that that size or larger. Um, this project did go to the tree board and I'll go through their recommendation later, but just throwing that out there as a point of emphasis. There's also no environmentally sensitive areas on the property, uh, such as stream buffers or floodplain. The county GIS does show that there is some topo um, on this property. However, by walking the property, it appears that a lot of it's been graded in the past, so that topography may not be up to, um, current standards. I will note though, on the back of the property, there is a sharp drop. But granted, they're not proposing anything back on that side, and the largest drop is on a different parcel from what is being rezoned. So this isn't a historic district, so there's no historical cultural significance, um, for this property in that regard. Uh, the community facilities will not be greatly impacted. This is a existing business who will remain in the ETJ. They're not being annexed for sewer. So there won't be additional strains on the sewer network. Uh, they are already being served by water by the city of Hendersonville, and the road is an NCDOT maintained street, so that maintenance will continue. Uh, the water resources section, they're, they are proposing to disturb more than an acre. So they will have to do stormwater control measures on site that treats the stormwater that is caused by the, the new impervious surfaces on the site. So they will have to go through that process if approved and when they go through final site plan. And like I mentioned, the site will be accessed by an NCDOT maintained street for the transportation portion. Compatibility, like I've mentioned previously, there is a wide variety of uses in this area currently. Uh, the close proximity to a major commercial corridor, Four Seasons Boulevard, and for it being visible from I twenty-six. And the proposed use slash businesses are in operation at this location. The change conditions, the reason for the rezoning, like I mentioned, is the fifty thousand square foot trigger. A public interest. There isn't many motorcycle retailers in Henderson County, and this will allow them to expand, um, their services and their retail selection to give the city of Hendersonville and its citizens a wider range or a wider range of motorcycle and services. Uh, public facilities, like I mentioned, the site is currently in use as it is. There's not going to be a whole lot of changes in infrastructure needed to, um, help this proposal. Uh, no trees on the side over twelve inches. And I think I've covered everything else, including stormwater. So here's the draft planning board and comprehensive plan consistency statement. As you'll see, regional activity center designation calls for community and regional retail sales and service as a primary recommended land use and offices as a secondary recommended land use. So both of those uses are pointed out under the regional activity center designation. And here's some reasons for approval. I won't read through all those. Um, also a possible reason for denial. So here's the site plan. So the site plan shows a two-story thirty two thousand nine hundred eighty-five square foot, um, expansion on the existing Schroder Honda site. This expansion would include space for sales and an office area. The one-story ten thousand four hundred square foot, um, building that Schroder Honda currently uses would remain as a warehouse and service area, as well as the one-story, um, structure in the back. That's approximately nine thousand six hundred eighty-nine square feet would remain as a metal warehouse for storage. In total, like I mentioned, exceeds fifty thousand square feet. There is, um, some, there is a condition proposed by the developer as far as parking and required parking. I'll go into that in a minute. One thing I will note while I'm on this site plan is staff did recommend a condition, um, concerning this entrance right here. Staff has proposed that this be an entrance only, uh, entrance, uh, just because there's some topography change right there. And there's also a curve which makes it hard to, would make it hard to pull out there and look to the left and have, give yourself enough time to see oncoming cars. I've reached out to NCDOT and they just gave very preliminary feedback, but they said that they, um, judge about what they've seen, they would be supportive of that condition. And granted, at, when this time comes, they may make it a requirement when they do their driveway permits, because this development would have to get driveway permits from NCDOT. Um, so I'll move on. Landscaping, they're showing all the landscaping that's required by the ordinance for vehicle use area, buffers, buffers from street and planting strips. All that is shown and is compliant with our ordinance. So staff analysis and conditions, like I mentioned, make the western driveway an entrance only due to existing topography and possible site distance issues. I will note, I mentioned this during the committee meeting before this meeting, we've kind of changed the way we're doing conditions now to make our motions a little bit shorter and save you all a little bit of time. So we are now changing it to whenever a developer agrees to a condition, we're going to automatically get them to put that on the site plan. So when you approve the site plan, you're approving the conditions as well when you approve that site plan. One thing to note, those are only conditions that the developers already are agreed to. So if there's a condition that they do not agree to, they would not put that in the site plan. For example, this one was not agreed to. So if you wanted to include that, you'd have to state that in your motion. Um, and I'll go over, there was some conditions for tree board that they did agree to, and those are already in your motion, so you wouldn't have to restate those. Uh, these are those conditions. Uh, recommended natural vegetation be retained on a slope outside the disturbance and appropriate native grasses and ever since plants, um, be planted beyond the imperable and permeable parking surface and down and around the retaining pond. I won't read through all these because these have already been agreed to. Um, so three, there's three recommended conditions. They have been agreed to by the developer, so those do not have to be stated. Uh, the developer did propose a condition as far as parking, which is reduce the off-street parking requirement from a hundred and eighteen spaces to thirty spaces. So our ordinance by the use and the square footages of the buildings and the number of employees um, would require, under normal circumstances, a hundred and eighteen parking spaces. Uh, the developer has recommend or requested that a condition be placed on this approval that would reduce that down to thirty spaces because that's what they feel they would realistically need for the type of business that they operate. And that is all I have. I, I know Will McBrayer, the engineer for the project is online. I'm not sure if anybody, okay, Monica? Yeah, Monica with the development team is also here in person. If you have any questions for her, I'm not sure if she has a presentation or not.
Do we have any, does anybody on the board have any questions for staff, for Tyler?
Does the retaining pond, where does it go? Does it just stay there until it evaporates, or is it draining somewhere?
The stormwater, I'm assuming it's going to drain out. It looks like it is appearing to drain out on the side. Um, doesn't look like there's any water leaving the side. So that's what it appears to, let's see. It appears to ultimately drain right here.
So there's a retention pond on site?
Yeah, so this, this whole area is the retention pond. And everything would come from the, um, pervious surfaces down in here and ultimately drain out over time to this location, it appears. Now granted, that would also have to go through our stormwater administrator to make sure that it meets all the city requirements um, in that regard, and that would come at final site plan. They have to show a very preliminary version of their stormwater system on these preliminary plans.
Would it still have to be engineered and approved?
Yes, yes.
Any, any other questions?
I, I do have one. So it's, it's, it's not in the city limits. It's in the ETJ. They're not intending to hook up to city sewers, so there won't be an annexation. Does that mean that they're, they're subject to county sign ordinance or city sign ordinance?
So all land development codes are included in our ETJ, and that's a part of our zoning ordinance. So they would be following our site, uh, our sign ordinance, excuse me. So yeah, any land development code would be the same whether they're in the city or in the ETJ in this zoning scenario.
They would be subject to city sign or-
Correct.
Seventy square foot and the digital sign ordinance.
Yes, correct.
Any other questions? There was something in the, in one of the site plans that showed an existing building maybe in the setback?
Yes.
Legal non-conforming?
Yeah, so there is an encroachment down here. Um, they're proposing to retain that, and yeah, it's a legal non-conforming, um, building. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be addressed. Um, in this process, there's already stipulations built into our ordinance if they ever wanted to expand that building or change it. Um, so they have to go through that process, but there is a legal non-conforming.
But it's in the setback, not across the property.
Yeah, it is within, it's within the setback on this property.
Okay. Yeah, down in that corner with the house. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Um, so is, is the applicant here or representative of the applicant come on up and let us know who you are. We need your name and address.
My name is Monica Barretta. I'm with LNG Architects, um, three oh five West Stone Avenue in Greenville, South Carolina, two nine six oh nine. Um, I just wanted to mention, um, he did a great job. Um, we do have, if you'll notice in the upper left-hand corner, um, in addition to the thirty spaces, there'll be motorcycle parking. Um, the client does have rides come in. He, I think he said maybe once a week or something, so that would be parking, um, for them. Um, and just to talk about the kind of the nature of this building, it's not, you know, it's kind of hard to fit in the uses because automobile sales, obviously you would have a lot more car spaces that would be needed. Um, but since this is not actually, um, full-size automobiles, um, that's why the reduction in parking is, is, um, kind of fits with this business. So if you have any questions, and Will, um, if you have anything on the site, I think Will, um, the civil, uh, yeah, he's on there, okay.
Does anybody have any questions? I, I have one regarding the, the, the one proposed condition. Is that something that the developer would be willing to? For the western, the western entrance exit would be an entrance only because there, there's a curve in the road and there's some topography change. It'd be hard to see traffic coming from the west.
I think Will, um, have you?
Can we unmute?
Yeah, I think he may know more about that than I do.
Hey, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, so the, the western-
If you could state your name and address for the, for the record.
Will McBrayer with Odom Engineering, six one two North Washington Street, Rutherford, NC two eight one three nine.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
All right, for the western driveway here, the site distance may actually turn out to be better there, looking to the left than going further down the hill. Do that as hope of topo change and we don't want to agree to limiting that as a right in only, entrance only until we get a full survey taken out of there and look at the site distance in a plan and profile view.
Okay, thank you. So that's not a condition that you would agree to at this time?
None at this time. Now, if it turns out after we get a final topo survey that we're not meeting site distance requirement that the NCDOT will agree to, then we'll happily agree to it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? On the board?
I've got two quick things that I may-
Go ahead.
Uh, one to allay your fears. I'm not even going to bring up dark skies because I've been by here at night and uh, the site does a very good job. It's reasonably compliant, so I'm impressed. Don't hear that from me very often. Um, the real question I have is, I'm assuming the parking area will be concrete since currently the parking is concrete. Um, is there any reasonable way that could be made pervious crushed gravel, something in that order to minimize storm runoff? Yeah, I, I've ridden motorcycles. I've gone on gravel. Sometimes not even intentionally.
I defer to you on this one.
I mean, it's-
Is Will still, is Will still unmuted?
Be speeding.
Okay.
I think he's, Will, can you speak to that or?
Well, I think in this case, the retention pond is going to handle all the stormwater reduction that we need. So the, the concrete will provide a smoother fit and finish. Things will be more accessible. And the stormwater will already be controlled by the, the detention bond in the southeast corner.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and open public comments then. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak about this, this application? If not, then, uh, is anybody on the Zoom call? Uh, if you are, you can use the raise your hand feature and we'll take your comments.
Ken Fitch, you've been unmuted.
Ken Fitch, ten forty-six Patton Street. I support the, uh, condition uh, regarding the, the drive with the western driveway because it is a blind curve and, uh, it should be entry only, particularly if you have motorcycles, uh, exiting from there would be a problem. So I think it is, um, in the interest of safety, that would be, um, desirable. But the question might be the visibility from the other driveway depending upon what is on that island. So some clarification of what's on that island and would that diminish the visibility from that? But that is a, a better, um, uh, exit from the property. Exit from the property. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the Zoom call? Nobody's raising their hand? Okay, we'll go ahead and close, close, uh, public comments on this particular application and. Have some discussion. What are you thinking, Peter?
Ken's, Ken's always observing that everything that's going on around it. The NC DOT finale, when they get done looking at the property and all the topo and everything else, they're going to decide into the story.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the sightlines have to be there for NC DOT to issue a driveway permit, but there's currently a driveway there. So I guess the question for city staff is if there's already an existing. Curb cut. Would it be required? I mean, would DOT even be required to? I mean, it's pretty open right now. You can pull in from. Yeah, all the way down. You can pull in right now.
No, I didn't.
Yeah. I guess the question is, would they, would the, would the applicant have to apply for a driveway permit since there's already one there?
Yeah, so they'll still have to go through NC DOT's driveway permit process.
Okay. I understand. Okay, good. Good clarification then. Any other discussion? We have a motion?
It just has a clarification. We don't need the. Condition because it's itself.
Well, the developer didn't agree to it, so it would be difficult to impose it. I, I guess the other question then for city staff is, and this might help us in the future, this board in the future, if, if we. If we feel strongly about a condition and the developer does not agree to it. Our options are then just not to recommend the project to city council or recommend.
Recommend the condition?
You could recommend.
City council, so they wouldn't necessarily have to agree today.
Right.
To the condition, in this case, you know, entrance only. If planning board felt strongly about it, you could still make it part of your motion to go to city council. Potentially maybe between now and city council, they get more information. And they could determine whether they want to agree to it or not. Maybe we have additional information. From the survey or from NC DOT and staff will be able to better be to it at city council. Maybe it resolves itself due to DOT. So, and that would be the case for any condition that the planning board wanted to pass along. Developer either was unable to agree to today, didn't have enough information to agree to today, but you wanted to make sure it stayed out in front of the project.
Okay, does that answer questions?
All right, I'll go ahead and try to do this motion for.
And I will state that in this case, the, the reduction in parking, that condition is already on the site plan. So it does not need to be written. It just, you just need a reference.
And the tree board recommendations have already been agreed to as well, correct?
Tree board.
Tree boards, yes.
That's correct. So those are all taken care of.
All right, I moved the planning board recommend the adoption of an ordinance amending the official zoning map. Of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pin nine five seven nine dash four five. Dash oh nine oh two from C three highway business to C three. C ZD highway business conditional zoning district. Based on the site plan submitted by the applicant dated March eighth. And presented at this meeting and subject to the following. One, the development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of permitted uses and applicable conditions. As presented on the site plan. Two, permitted uses and, and applicable conditions presented on the site plan shall be amended. To include, are we supposed to use that part? Because we're not really.
If you're not including any additional conditions, then you would not need to use that part.
Okay, well, I would say that. We would favor the entry only on the driveway. But we understand that they have to work with DOT.
Very good.
Three, the petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan. Based on the information from the staff analysis because one. The regional activity center designation calls for community and regional retail sales and services as a primary recommended land use. And offices as a secondary recommended land use under strategy. LU dash nine point two and nine point three. Four, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis. And the public hearing and because one, development is an expansion of an existing news. Business in, in this area. Two, the subject property is classified as a priority infill area. On map eight point three A. Three, the portion of the property is identified as development opportunity. On map eight point two B.
Okay, so we have a motion and we added one condition about the western entrance, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Okay, we have one remaining item on the agenda, the Apple Ridge rezoning. It's a conditional zoning district. And looks like Tyler's going to make this presentation as well.
So we have another conditional rezoning application in front of you tonight for your recommendation. This is Apple Ridge. The location is five two four East Prince Road. The applicant is the Housing Assistance Corporation. The current property owners is Thomas and Sherry Thompson. The existing zoning is city of Hendersonville R fifteen, which is medium density residential. The proposed zoning is PRD CZD, which stands for Plan Residential Development, Conditional Zoning District. As you can see, it's sixteen point nine acres. The proposed uses are residential dwellings, multifamily and residential dwelling, single family. The project details, they're proposing to do sixty multifamily units and twenty single-family lots. This is an affordable tax credit project. They are trying to receive low-income tax credit. Low-income tax credits from the state for the multifamily piece, so that this is going through that process with the state. And the future land use designation for this parcel is business center. So as a part of the conditional rezoning process, a neighborhood compatibility meeting is required. This meeting was held on January third, twenty twenty-two. Ten people attended in person, three virtually. The questions, some of the questions were about the price of the units, what is actually considered affordable housing in Hendersonville. How big are the houses going to be once built? And will there be a homeowner association for those newly constructed single-family homes? One commenter did show support for the affordable housing because Hendersonville does have a affordable housing crisis. But he did state that the project would need to be done the right way. If, if approved. Concerns were traffic, or traffic safety and ingress and egress to the site. The impacts to the environment, there are some blue line streams on the parcel and some larger trees. And also what would be the density? They wanted to make sure the density was in alignment with what is existing. In the neighborhoods that abut this property. So the subject property is surrounded by a variety of zoning classifications and uses. The uses range from single-family residential to many warehouses and public facilities. Parcels to the southeast are zone Henderson County R one. This area is comprised of the Lakeview Estates neighborhood. The neighborhood consists of mostly single-family residents with some two-family residential mixed in. Parcels to the west primarily contain commercial uses and zoning classifications. This area contains city of Hendersonville Fire Station number two. Triple A mini storage, vacant land and the Cascades Mountain Resort. Parcels to the north are zone commercial and residential. This area contains high-density residential uses such as clay, claystone manufactured housing development. And the Sugarloaf and Sugar Hill Apartments, which are also Housing Assistant Corporation projects. Like I mentioned, there is a pretty, pretty widely varying area as far as uses. So this would be two uses that are already currently present in the general area that's being proposed. So the top left picture is looking from the parcel to East Prince. This area would be kind of. Kind of dictate or kind of shows where that future connection would be to East Prince. You can imagine a bridge crossing the river out there and connecting to that portion of East Prince Road. The picture to the top right shows. Basically a typical buffer that's found on the property between this property and the Lakeview Estates neighborhood. So as you walk through there, there's a lot of ponds. And some larger trees in that area, but mostly ponds. That are separating this parcel from that single-family neighborhood. Bottom left is kind of a good picture of where. The multifamily buildings are proposed to go. They kind of overlook the storage units there shown in the picture. And also, as you can see in the bottom right, that is the blue line stream that runs on the property. I believe there's two. That intersect on the property, but that's a quick picture of one of those. So the site is designated as a business center due to its large size and proximity to I twenty-six. Business center is designated for parcels that front along I twenty-six. Which would be this one. I won't go through the other locations. Parcels to the east and south are designated as medium intensity neighborhood. This classification represents the Lakeview Estates neighborhood that encompasses the majority of that area. Parcels to the north are designated as high-intensity neighborhood. This area has a mix of uses, including commercial, multifamily housing. And manufactured housing development. Parcels to the northwest are designated as Regional Activity Center. This designation reflects the commercial node around the I twenty-six interchange with US sixty-four slash chimney rock road. So like I mentioned in the last presentation. Each future land use designation has a goal. The goal for this particular designation is to create an employment corridor along I twenty-six that supports the growth of Hendersonville. As a business destination, create a campus-like mixed-use environment that includes office, research, low-impact industrial uses. As well as supportive retail amenities. Multifamily residential is a secondary recommended land use under this designation. Single-family is not a recommended land use under this designation. So the, also the shop, site plan shows an easement for a future. Greenway between the multifamily and single-family neighborhoods, which is following the guideline for one of the business center designed. Standards, which is the encouragement of pedestrian connections to multi-use pathways between uses. So they are showing that. Future greenway, possible greenway to reflect one of the goals or design guidelines of the business center designation. The land development chapter of the comprehensive plan designates this parcel as a priority growth area. And this area is includes areas that are considered high priority for expansion of the ETJ annexation. And extension of infrastructure and services. The property is identified as a development opportunity, which includes vacant land, agricultural land. Single-family residential and properties greater, single-family residential owned properties greater than five acres. So population and housing. This development's very heavy on this chapter as far as population and housing goes. One of the goals that our comprehensive plan sets out is to encourage a wide range of housing types. And price points in order to meet the diverse and evolving needs of current and future residents. Match the housing supply with local workforce and promote diverse neighborhoods. So this development would follow that guideline because they are offering two different types of housing. Both affordable, but one would be owner-based and one would be rentals, so that meets that criteria. Encourage a provision, a provision of affordable housing units and new developments. Further goes on to require, encourage at least ten percent of units sold in new developments to be affordable to people making. Up to eighty percent of area medium income. So this would be all affordable instead of just a ten percent. So that follows that guideline as well. As far as natural and environmental resources. Our comprehensive plan says protect land adjacent to streams to protect water quality. Reduce erosion and protect wildlife habitat. A part of our ordinance, our zoning ordinance requires stream buffers for any blue line stream. So there are blue line streams on this property. The site plan does depict the thirty-foot stream buffer. And twenty-foot transitional area, which would follow the guidance outlined in the comprehensive plan. And enable, encourage low-impact development practice, stormwater management. There is a condition that was provided by our stormwater administrator concerning low-impact stormwater management practices. I'll go through that later on and there was a counter by the developer for that. So we'll go through that in a couple of slides. Cultural and historical resources. Once again, this isn't a historic neighborhood or historic area with. In regards to landmark designations or anything like that, community facilities. Encourage community open space or play areas in new or redeveloped residential neighborhoods. They are providing sidewalks to connect neighborhoods as well as a playground for the multifamily. Portion of the property. Prevent development and stream corridors and preserve natural drainage patterns and improve the quality of stormwater runoff. Falling under water resources, like I mentioned, they are not proposing development within those stream corridors. And once again, enable, encourage low development impact, low-impact development practices and stormwater management. So that would fall into that as well. As far as transportation, improved roadways is needed to implement the land use vision and meet the level of service requirements by NC DOT. Widen and improve existing roadways as indicated on a specific map in our comprehensive plan, which does include. Sugarloaf. So compatibility, like I mentioned earlier, there is a wide mix of. Uses in this area. Both uses that are proposed are already currently in this area. Multifamily more particularly, that is existing is also. Development built and managed by the developer proposing this development as well. Change conditions. The city is currently in a desperate need for affordable housing. The proposed development also provides two different forms of affordable housing that meets people in different areas and different parts of the workforce. So it also meets that guidance. Let's see. The addition of twenty single-family homes and sixty apartment units will help fill a need for the additional housing stock that's needed in Hendersonville. Public facilities. As part of this, you saw on the site plan, they are, they're showing a road that basically connects. Sugarloaf Road to East Prince Road. That would be built to city street standards. It would be a public street. And would be able to be built to those standards. The water and sewer department has received availability request for this project. And lastly, the site's currently a greenfield site for new development. There would be an increased of pervious surfaces if developed, of course. Let's see, the site plan currently, or the site currently has one thousand eighty trees over twelve inches or greater diameter. The developers proposing to remove forty-seven of those trees and retain a thousand thirty-three trees. But they are also proposing to plant sixty-five new trees. So this is a possible draft comprehensive plan consistency statement. As I mentioned earlier, the business center designation calls for multifamily as a secondary recommended land use. And the proposed site plan aligns with some of the development guidelines under LU thirteen dot four. This is a possible reasonableness statement for approval. We also have a possible reasonableness statement, statement for denial. This is the site plan that is tied to this rezoning. As I mentioned, the proposed eighty dwelling units on sixteen point nine acres is a density of four point seven three acres per unit. No other uses are proposed to be permitted by the rezoning. Site plan shows three multifamily structures and a clubhouse. This includes thirty-three bedroom units and thirty-one and two-bedroom units. The site plan also shows twenty single-family lots ranging in size from zero point one-six acres to zero point three-one acres. The site will be accessed from two NC DOT roads. The site plan would be completed in two phases. Um the proposed first phase would be the multifamily development, while the second phase would be the single-family development. One other note, um if approved by city council for the rezoning, um whenever they wanted to plat the single-family portion and start the, that process, they would have to bring a preliminary plat back before you all for approval when the time comes. And this project is currently in the ETJ, and they are proposing to connect to sewer, so they would be annexing into the city of Hendersonville. Uh staff analysis. This is a minor comment about a table with setbacks. It's no, it's just a small technical comment correction, where the setbacks currently overlap. Uh we will work with the engineer to get this corrected. So here is a recommended condition. It came from our stormwater administrator. Uh there is currently wetlands on the, on site. So his recommendation was to acquire at least one stormwater control measure via stormwater wetland to mitigate the impacts to the existing wetlands on the site. Uh the developer received that condition and they did have a counter to that one. Just, and their counter was to make one stormwater control measure a stormwater wetland if the soil conditions allow stormwater wetland. Uh this would be just determined during the final site plan process. Our stormwater administrator was given the counter and he was agreeable to the counter. Um, I believe he even reached out to their engineer to discuss that further, but the city um is agreeable to the developer proposed counter, which is included on the site plan.
It is.
It is, it is included. You would not have to restate that.
Okay, gotcha.
And then the tree board reviewed this project at their February fifteenth meeting. Uh the tree board had four um recommended conditions. Uh the developer did agree to the first two, which is about preserving as many um larger trees as possible. And then following the guidance in the zoning ordinance as if they were using these trees for tree credits, which has some preservation requirements. Uh number three had to deal with uh more stipulations on the stream buffers. And number four dealt with invasive species and their removal. Those two were not agreed upon by the developer. I'm sure they'll um speak to that more in their presentation. But the first two are already included in your motion. If you chose to include the other two, you'd have to state those. And that is all I have for you all.
Any questions?
Development team um and their engineer also in attendance.
Go ahead, Neil.
This will probably be multiple questions. Bear with me, please. Um. As I reread this over the weekend, um my understanding is that under the current zoning, they'd essentially be allowed by Wright, three dwelling units per acre, fifteen thousand square foot lot, roughly three per acre. Under the PRD CZD, that would go up to ten per acre, correct?
Yes, by right. Under PRD permitted by Wright would be ten. If they did above and beyond and asked for density bonus, that can go up to eighteen, but yeah.
Okay.
The base is ten.
So without the density bonus, we'd be, the rezoning would take it, you know, give roughly from uh possible fifty units right now to a hundred and seventy.
Well, it's attached to a site plan.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um. And that rezoning would be perpetual barring a future rezoning. PRD is the next question. Hang with me a second here, please. Um. The real question behind that last one was what if we rezone and HAC does not get the tax credits, does not go through with the, with the purchase of the property? Um, the rezoning would then allow any developer to come in and with site plan, et cetera, et cetera, potentially put in a hundred and seventy units?
No, so if rezoned, they would be tied to the unit count. This design, um so they would have to follow this exactly. They couldn't come in and go above the eighty units that are proposed. They couldn't come in and say they're going to do a hundred and seventy.
Okay.
Is that because it's conditioned?
Yes, so the conditional ties in the site plan and the uses. So on the site plan, it clearly says that it's going to be sixty apartments and then twenty single families. So that's tied in to that. If they wanted to go above that, they would have to come back to the process, the full process.
Oh, I will note that unless the affordable component is attached as a condition, then this site plan could be developed at market rate. Let's say they sell it, they don't get the tax credits, it gets sold to somebody else, they want to come in and build the same site plan, it wouldn't necessarily have the affordable component unless that was a condition of the approval.
That makes sense, but what if, what if the, the current applicant didn't get the tax credit and decided to develop it at market rate?
And that's like.
That's okay.
Yeah.
There was no condition that.
Allowed to unless there was a condition that it had to be a hundred percent affordable.
Barring any condition for affordability.
Right.
And that would be the case.
Okay, thank you, man Tyler.
I don't have any question. Anybody else have any questions for staff? Okay, thank you Tyler. So is the developer or the representative here and would like to come up and speak, if you so, give us your name and address and tell us what you got.
All right, well, good evening. I'm Ashlyn McCoy, the executive director for the Housing Assistance Corporation. Our office is located at two fourteen North King Street here in Hendersonville. Um I think I'm going to start and kind of give you an overview of who we are, what we do and what some things look like. And then um Mr. Will Bowie is going to take over from there. So the Housing Assistance Corporation is a local nonprofit organization here in Henderson County, and our sole mission is to provide safe and affordable housing to persons of limited income. We've been doing that for thirty-four years here in this community. And we've developed two hundred single-family homes, three hundred and seventy multifamily apartment units, and we also have a robust home repair program as well. Um we've, like it says, we've developed dozen affordable units here in Henderson County and specifically sick tax credit um sites before. I just wanted to give you kind of an overview of a couple of projects um up in the left-hand corner. That's our newest development, seventy-eight units, Oklahua Village off North Main Street. Um and the lower right-hand corner, that is our Sugarloaf Apartments. Um you guys have, it was mentioned by Tyler's presentation earlier, it's across the street from this purpose project. And then the two single-family pictures, um that is our Hillcrest subdivision out in Dana. So we are, we are really excited for this Apple Ridge project. As you've heard multiple times, um safe and affordable housing is a huge need in our area, and this is going to provide more diverse housing options to our community. Um it is, like Tyler mentioned, a tax credit project. We have that pre-application and, and we are awaiting and anticipating a full award um later. So that's sixty multifamily units and then our single-family housing, our twenty units down below in the south portion of this project. Um, we use a USDA loan model, so clients come in, they receive housing counseling. Um and then they either go in a self-help program, which they build, help build their home. And then, or they can go in a new homes program. They don't have the sweat equity component, but they do get a new affordable home. This um project will be a hundred percent affordable, so um the single-family units serve an income range of eighty percent AMI below, so that's about sixty thousand one hundred dollars. And the tax credit per North Carolina state statute um serves sixty percent AMI below, and I have that number right here on the top of my head. Um so for a household of four, that's forty-five thousand three hundred dollars and below. Um our rent range for this multifamily unit project um is anywhere from four hundred and twenty-two dollars all the way up to the highest is one thousand thirty-three dollars. When you compare that to the average rent in Henderson County, which is right between twelve hundred and fifteen hundred dollars, we are very much affordable. Our single-family homeowners, um they, the house, the houses that we are looking at for this development are around twelve to fifteen hundred square feet, give or take if they need a four-bedroom uh unit or not. Um and our self-help program is looking around two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to build for construction, and that includes the land. Let me see, what other questions I wanted to get answered? Um so we, we are excited and um happy to take any questions and the rent or the, and the mixed unit is one, two, and three bedrooms and one and two baths, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashlyn. I'm Will Bowie with WG LA Engineering, seven twenty-four Fifth Avenue, Hendersonville, North Carolina. Appreciate the opportunity to be with y'all this evening. Um share a couple of comments about the site plan and a few particulars and then take any questions that you all have. Uh Tyler's done a good job of describing the project and describing the area. Uh just a couple of points. You can obviously see the city of Hendersonville Fire Station off to the, to the northwest there. You can see triple A storage on the aerial photograph. In the middle um of the uh of the site, you can see the apartment units. Those will be made up of three buildings. Uh there will be a clubhouse associated with the project, as well as playground area. Uh covered uh covered shelter, picnic area, uh that would all be included and available for the sixty multifamily units that you see. As the road extends through the property and then down to the south and connects back over onto East Prince, you can see the lots that are in the darker green. The dark green represents the twenty, twenty single-family lots that are shown. The areas that are in light green are primarily the common open space areas. And you can see the blue line streams. You can see the streams associated with the property that Tyler mentioned. Those areas are to be preserved, it's except for the perpendicular crossings where we'll cross with the roadways. Um we'll talk a little bit more about those stream crossings because we want to address the comments and the suggestions that the tree board had. Couple of other, of other key points that I'll share with you. The um future land use, uh Tyler had mentioned that multifamily was one of the secondary uses, single-family while not listed as a use in that future land use. This is currently zoned R fifteen. Uh so it's already a, a use for single-family, so we believe that it is very much appropriate and and in keeping with uh the current zoning and the future land use plan. Zoom in just a little bit further to the site plan, and here you can see a, a few more details um of the single-family lots and of the, of the multifamily. Again, you can see the three multifamily buildings. Clubhouse is in the middle green space area, which will include the playground. Streams associated, kind of hard to see, but we would have a future greenway connection uh easement that would be established that would connect from the cul-de-sac that's reaching to the north and over to the uh multifamily. While the greenway wouldn't be proposed immediately, we are establishing an easement, proposing to establish an easement for that future greenway. We heard a, a couple of things at the neighborhood compatibility meeting that uh we wanted to address and we tried to address with the uh, with project. One of the things we heard and with uh our neighbors were concerns about buffers. Um I think as you saw the uh aerial, and I'm going to flip back one. You can see that if you look on the south end of the property, it is fairly wooded, it is fairly vegetated. Uh our proposal is to maintain that vegetation on our side of the property line where the single-family lots are. And we also have a fair amount of common open space that we would keep in place. But in addition to that, uh we've also asked the city staff to consider allowing uh the front setbacks for these lots be reduced from thirty feet to twenty feet. The basis of the setbacks that we had proposed were with the R fifteen zoning. The twenty-foot setback that we had requested would allow us to keep the houses closer to the road. That's less driveway to construct, and that's less driveway for our, our homeowners to maintain. But it also allows us to keep more buffer in the rear of the lots. And so we felt like that was a good, uh a good idea to consider as we listen to our neighbors. Um traffic concerns, we did hear primarily the traffic concerns that we heard were from folks in Lakeview Estates and off of East Prince. We have reached out to the Department of Transportation. Obviously, we'll have to go through a DOT driveway permit process with them. We'll have to meet all of their standards. But one of the concerns we heard was that there is some confusing signage and confusing traffic control in that Lakeview Estates or coming out of that Lakeview Estates neighborhood. We've alerted DOT to that, and we're hoping that maybe this project can shed a light on that, and DOT will hopefully help to address those items. Um, a couple of other things, and then I'll stop and answer questions. I think this may have been in your packet, but again, this is a, a preliminary rendering of what the uh what the multifamily units will look like. And I suspect most of you are familiar with the Oklahua Village. This is a similar type product. Uh you can see the larger three-story buildings. You can see the clubhouse that would, would service the neighborhood. And then this is just a, a photograph of a, of a typical home that we would expect to see. This is constructed by Housing Assistance Corporation. It gives you an idea of, of what the single-family residential may look like. So to wrap up, just a couple of thoughts. Um, we wanted to share with you suggested conditions. We have talked with Mike Huffman about the uh about the proposed stormwater wetland, and we're very much in favor of that. Uh the only caveat was that we'd need the correct soil conditions to be able for that uh stormwater wetland to function. Mike and I corresponded on Friday, and he was comfortable with that uh caveat with the, with the uh condition. And so I think we're in agreement there. Related to the uh, to the uh conditions suggested by the tree board, the first two, we are in agreement with. The second two related to enhancement of the stream buffer and removal of, of uh invasive species. Housing Assistance Corporation met with Conservant Carolina, they actually toured the site, they looked at that. We're hopeful that there can be a relationship there that they can help us as far as preserving and enhancing uh the stream buffer area. Uh certainly, it would require some work. Our concern with the condition is the financial impact to Housing Assistance Corporation and the project. Uh the quote from Conservant Carolina is the two conditions would be hundreds of thousands of dollars in cost. This is not simply a matter of volunteers coming in to remove some of the invasives. Likely, most of this work would be heavy equipment they're bringing in to restore and establish stream buffer areas. So uh while it is a goal and it is something that we think we would like to try to incorporate in the project, we would appreciate the idea of it not being a condition because it is going to place an impact on, on the affordability uh of the process for affordability here. So that is the reason that we have requested that those two conditions or those two suggestions not be listed as conditions. Um, a couple of other points. Again, this is just a unique opportunity. Um I suspect you all very rarely see projects coming to you at a hundred percent affordability. Um this is, this is a unique opportunity, and we hope that uh, that this will provide something that's very needed in our area. Uh we've worked very hard with the developer to come up with a plan that respects the conditions on the site, respects the existing streams and wetlands that are out there and preserves to the greatest extent possible. Um, we've worked with them also related to the existing vegetation and buffers. Um I will point out to you, I don't think there's a thousand trees out there. I think that might have been a typo. Um I think it's a little less than that, but the number of trees that we, we would propose to remove and trees to plant was correct. And so uh we do have that commitment to you. And so I'll stop and Ashlyn, was there anything else you wanted to add?
I, I'll stop and we'll be glad to answer any questions that you all might have of us.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any questions for either Will or Ash?
Two questions. I know that you said someone in the neighborhood meeting brought about a homeowners association. And the second one is, in the single-family homes, are residents allowed to put a storage unit at the back, a car canopy or?
Sure, so, so um we will follow the guidelines set by the city of Hendersonville for establishing an HOA for this development. Um, the homeowners, we do typically, and Sean can speak to this, but we do typically put some sort of storage unit, a small one in the back piece of the property, um just to supply them an extra space to keep things. Um. I hope that answers some of your questions.
And the sweat equity, do you measure that?
Sure, our homeowners come out, so they're in a self-help program which is monitored by us staff and also USDA. So they come out about ten hours a week and work on the builder of their home. Usually one night a week and then on a Saturday with our staff, so they do monitor that. It's a, it's a whole process and they cannot get behind on hours.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Neil.
So there is no requirement right now, no condition that this has to be affordable housing, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
That would have to be stated. I do want to clarify the setbacks. So for this development on the main road. Since it would be a public street, the setback would be thirty-five feet from the center line for a forty-five foot right of way. That essentially comes down to twelve and a half foot front setback. So if you're wanting to place them at twenty feet, you're in good shape, no condition needed. Could even come in a little bit closer and leave more room in, in the rear.
Right, thanks for the clarification, man.
Any other questions? I, I do have one or two. So who, who's going to manage the property, specifically the multifamily after it's constructed, rented up, that kind of thing?
So we partner with a third-party management company, Partner Property Partnership Property Management. They manage all of our properties here in Henderson County and they do a fabulous job.
So there's, there's money that's put into reserves to maintain the property?
Yes, sir.
Perpetually?
Yes, sir.
The other thing is, because there's government funding involved, are there any types of studies that have to be done on the property?
Sure, so we will have to do an environmental assessment. There's a market study that has already been done, I've actually got that back today and we will be going and working with the Corps of Engineers on the wetlands to receive permits that are applicable to this project.
Okay.
I have one last question. If a homeowner of a single family chooses to sell. How does that work?
So a homeowner in our program, they own the home, they own the land and they could choose to sell, we do not see that happen often just because no one in this market currently or probably in the future can go and buy the same product for the same price that they are getting it. These homeowners are also invested in our program. Like I said, they spent ten hours a week of their life on top of jobs and top of families building their home. So they have a commitment into that as well. We don't see people flipping our properties. Ever, really. And also USDA, if they're in the sweat equity program, they do have to pay back their sweat equity if they live, leave within so many years.
Can, can we talk just briefly again about the, the shortened, the shortened driveways because you're pushing, talking about pushing the homes up toward the street? Sir, up at the Village of King Creek, which was also a housing assistance project. I believe they either ended up with very short driveways or no driveways and there's a lot of street parking, it seemed to create a lot of problems up there. And then when you did Oklawaha Village, you put carports with storage behind them. And, and a, you know, a decent sized driveway. I'm just wondering where, why we're going, you're going back to what happened at King Creek.
Don't know that it's exactly, and I'll speak and let you mention, I don't think it's exactly as Kane Creek, we are, we would, King Creek, excuse me. We would still have driveways that would allow parking off of the right of way, it would have not obstructed the, it would not obstruct the sidewalk. We would just simply have room adjacent to the, to the houses. So the driveway may not be directly in front of the house, it may be to the side of the house. And will allow us to pull the houses closer to keep the buffer in place. We've tried to look at the lots and the alignment of the lots as well as the typical house footprint so that we can provide those two parking spaces minimum on the property.
Okay, thank you. Sure, any other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and open the, the public input portion. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak about this project? Okay, what about on the, go ahead and come on up, man. Just give us your name and address and.
Matt Banks, five twenty East, boy, that's loud. Five twenty East Prince Road, Hendersonville. I'm right at the bottom corner there. Did you say that the rental was gonna be?
So what, what you're doing is at, at the neighborhood compatibility meeting, you're able to address the developer here, you're addressing this board.
Okay.
We'll ask them any questions.
Okay, so I was wondering if I overheard her right saying that the rental was, was gonna be between four hundred and a thousand. I was also questioning, the last time I was here, we were talking about putting the septic pump right adjacent to my property. Wondering what's still going on with that. And the third question I have is, do y'all want to buy my property and add it to that? The trees that are being taken down also next to my property which is adjacent to me.
So you're adjacent to the single family?
I'm right there for the arrow, yes. That's me right there. My driveway actually follows that.
Yeah, I see it, okay.
B shape, yeah.
Yeah.
And so the septic, I think it's gonna be just above on the left there for the red. How far apart or how far away is that gonna be from the property line? And I think that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the room would like to speak? What about on the Zoom call? Oh, go ahead, sir.
If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll get to you after these next comments.
I'm Jared Onby, I'm at four twelve Hillcrest Circle, just to the south. I'd like to address the board and convey to Will Bowie and his team great job at addressing our concerns at the last meeting. And I would like to add, you know, as an adjoining property owner, the shortening of the driveways and adding to the rear setback. Obviously, I'm in favor of that, so I just wanted to add that and put that on the record.
Thank you, appreciate it, Jacob. All right, is anybody else in the room would like to speak about the project? What about on the Zoom call, is there anybody raising their hand?
We have one.
Okay.
Ken Fitch, you've been unmuted.
And Fitch, ten forty-six Patton Street. This important essential project in its design, its process of implementation and in response to comments from the neighbors and the public has sought to achieve a level of compatibility not often experienced for major developments. Unlike the massive clear cutting that characterizes many projects. This project has been designed to be compatible with the environment in which it is located and to respect rather than ignore the presence of blue line streams within its boundaries and preserve existing buffering trees. Most notably, it has implemented amendments and adjustments to the site plan in response to concerns and comments from the neighbors and the public. And should more issues of concern be presented today, one would anticipate that the applicants would seek to address them. During the process thus far, issues of concern have been raised about the location of the pump station and sewer line, sidewalks and respect for the tree buffers with the adjacent residential neighborhood. And in outreach to resolve some nearby traffic safety issues, measures have been suggested for cooperative implementation. As such, one might understand that a residential development is a compatible designated use for the property. A secondary use that now has some priority. For this meeting, I would simply request to clarify some very specific issues. First, the sewer connection and its functioning. I believe that it's not a, a septic tank, it is a pump station. And perhaps some clarification of how that system works would be helpful for understanding. Further, the, some clarification of the entry and exits to the project and the intersections. With special attention to the functioning during a morning rush hour scenario, especially it's Sugarloaf Road from that sloped approach. Now on the site plan, there is a proposed sidewalk on Sugarloaf Road and one would wish discussion of that amenity. And delineation of a school bus stop would be very important. In terms of landscapes, clarification of the buffer with the adjacent residential neighborhood is important for delineation. Specifically, one property owner raised the issue of a need for infill buffering for the apartment complex. But the, the drawing that Mr. Bowie showed appears to address that issue. Mr. Bowie also mentioned a berm and a possible buffering for parcels fourteen through nineteen. I wonder if that is still active and viable, that would be an important buffer. And then finally, there was a concern about preserving the onsite buffering and honoring the setbacks for parcel eight through twelve. And this is what Mr. Bowie just presented. And that would be an asset, be an asset to buffering with the neighboring community as one of the neighbors has presented, but also presents a preservation of the natural environment which is an important feature here. So in closing, I wish to thank the applicants for their responsible, respectful and transparent process toward achievement of compatibility in the process so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else on the Zoom call? Use the, nobody's hands are raised? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion.
Did you want to get some clarification on some of those questions from the?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I didn't know if you might do that before you close.
Yeah, no. So this is city sewer, so a pump station obviously is gonna pump stuff uphill. But it's not septic, so, so talk about, talk about the location of the pump station, what a pump station does, does it make noise? Does it sure overflow and smell?
Sure, the, the pump station would be located. Oh, that's how that works, great, wow. We actually, with some of the comments that we had received, this is showing the existing external property line here. Had attempted to push the pump station further north. So this buffer that you're seeing here is somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred feet. So we've attempted to move that away. We're also attempting to keep all of the existing vegetation on this back area again to, to provide buffering in this area. Sewer pump stations are, are owned and operated throughout the city of Hendersonville. Gravity sewer is collected downhill to that pump station and then mechanically pumped. In this case, back to the north to connect with other gravity sewer lines. This pump station would ultimately be owned and maintained by the city of Hendersonville, it would have a generator that would allow it to operate should it lose power and it has multiple pumps in it that should one pump fail, there's a backup pump that's in place. So hopefully that answers some of the questions that I think we needed to clarify.
Do they, do they make a lot of noise?
I mean, this is the most part, they do not, again, they're primarily the, the pumps and are located below grade. The only thing typically above grade is a fence around the station and then a control panel. Normally, if you were standing inside that fenced area, you might hear a hum when the pumps come on, but they are not very loud at all.
Yeah, you see them all over town, I think they're the, they've got a little red light on the top in case something was going wrong.
Exactly right, that's exactly right.
There was another question about lots fourteen through nineteen.
Yes. We, these lots will back up to, to our neighbor here and our thought had been, while it's not specifically shown in this plan, that we would utilize existing topsoil that's collected when we build the rest of the facilities to create a berm for those lots. We think that's in the best interest, this, there's a overflow parking area here, a storage for vehicles. And so we think that that berm would provide a good buffer for those folks. So that is still part of our plan, ultimately that would be worked out in detailed engineering plans. And then I think the other question was related to the buffer along this edge and that's what we were referring to by allowing the, the front setback to move closer, we're able to provide more buffer on that rear, on those rear yards.
Okay, and then there was another question about adding some clarity to the entrance and exits.
Yes, and I don't know specifically what the question was, on, on East Prince. The road actually comes and makes a hard ninety-degree turn here. Our proposal is that we would connect to that and create basically a three-way intersection. So that becomes a little bit of a safer movement at that point. Related to the Sugarloaf Road, we are showing full, we are showing full site triangles that would be provided. This would have to be again, in conjunction, the design of that intersection would be in conjunction with NCDOT. So we've provided site distance and the necessary stacking that's gonna be required for those connections.
Okay, thank you, any other questions?
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Yes, sir. What are you thinking, Fred?
The only, I would add the condition of affordability.
Yeah.
Because I think housing assistance story is, is pretty trustworthy, but if something happened and they didn't get their money and this project had to, probably had to go somewhere else. I'd rather have those restrictions.
Agreed.
So you're thinking that you wouldn't want to see this project built as it's on the site plan unless it was affordable, correct? What about your dark sky on the multifamily?
I'm more concerned right now with affordability.
Okay, but then rather than placing restrictions?
Yes. On this one, yeah, surprised today.
About you, Tamara?
Yeah.
You know, even if they did market rate, we still need market rate.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I was thinking, or if, if housing assistance didn't get the tax credit and wanted to do. So I have seen folks do multifamily where they charge market rate or even above market rate on a portion of it. And then create affordability, so maybe we don't say a hundred percent, you know, maybe the condition.
Has a component, yeah.
It has a component, yeah, if it's market rate, then we can, then we can apply other conditions like the dark skies and other things that we're leaving out for affordability.
Yeah, I'd have a hard time ignoring affordability if we draft it below fifty percent.
Right.
Very hard time. I want to go with a hundred percent, but if we were to do the
Condition.
provisional HAC doesn't get the tax credit, et cetera, et cetera. I would have a very hard time supporting this if affordability were below fifty percent.
Okay.
Easily, I would too.
And I just pulled that number out of the air.
So my understanding is that, that every two years, an organization can apply in Henderson County. Maybe, maybe we could get some clarification about the tax credit. So every two years Henderson County can get a tax credit project, is that correct? You've got some competition, I know the, there was a neighborhood compatibility meeting for the property on sixty-four the other day.
Um, so developers can apply for tax credits every year.
Every year, okay.
Yep, it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. It can be a nonprofit group, it can be a for-profit company. It is a competitive statewide award. We do have competition here in Henderson County, I think there are two, two other projects currently that are tax credit application.
And only one of them can get funded?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
It, there's a lot of variables in that. I'm sorry.
It's not. A lot of it has to do with, I think, the site, the sites, the site gets scored based on how close it is to a grocery store.
So they look at unit mix.
Transportation.
Rates are, they look at how close you are to a grocery store, pharmacy, schools, amenities of that sort. Does, is it on a transportation line, how walkable is it, those sorts of things, so it, it's very complicated, yeah.
So without the tax credits, what's the housing authorities plan to, for this property?
So the Housing Assistance Corporation, we are looking at different models, but anything that we would present before you because it is our mission to provide affordable housing would be eighty percent AMI and below. So when we're talking about affordability, if you guys are gonna put a condition on that, I would like to specify what you mean by affordable because that could get skewed, please.
That's fair. The city attorney would appreciate that as well and specifics in a condition that spell out.
Eighty percent of.
Area median.
AMI, eighty percent of AMI.
That at least fifty percent of the, you know, using hypothetical, that we're, was getting at least fifty percent of the units will be available to those at eighty percent AMI or under.
So if it didn't get funded through this process, is it possible that it could still happen?
Sure, there's other models out there for a project like this. So it could be a USDA model, it could be a HUD model. So there are other options for a development.
A affordable.
Yes, an affordable development, yes.
But the, is the single family, the single family is part of the tax credit or no?
No, the single family is not part of the tax credit. Those are two completely, completely separate programs. That is USDA rural development program.
You're gonna do them in different phases? I guess that is a good question.
The multifamily will need to go first, yes.
Multifamily would go first?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'm a strong proponent of affordable housing, as you guys know.
You should scream about it.
I would go for it as a condition.
At fifty percent?
I, no, I would go higher to a hundred. I mean, seventy-five percent. We've got people, apartments going up that started twelve. That people making fifteen dollars an hour can't afford. And I'm looking for affordable housing for people within the city as opposed to people moving down for affordable housing. That's my, that's my shtick and I'm sticking to it.
All right, anybody else have any comments? We have a motion?
Take it, Barbara.
I can't read all of this.
So I have, here's the consistency statement. Here's your consistency statement for the comp plan, because we do have one item, the, the, the single family is not consistent with the comp plan.
So I read this one, the recommendations here for suggested motions.
Yes, I believe that's the one. Yeah, we've got, we've got the consistency.
This is the consistent one.
That is the correct one.
Okay.
So it would be on this page, and then you'd flip to the next, and there'd be additional points.
And then you want to add another condition?
Back hall. There you go.
And then the condition, did we agree upon it?
So.
I, I'll just say, Barbara, I don't, I don't think we should be doing it because I think we're getting into their business model. And the housing at the way it's site planned already is needed. I mean, so, and it's a wonderful site plan. It's, it's a really, really good site plan.
So you're saying you, you feel like, even if it didn't go affordable, which is.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I agree that we need, I agree everything you said that we need it. But I just, I just believe that, that, you know, as a board, when people come in front of us with a viable site plan that meets all of our needs, that, that we're, we're then dictating their business model and their component on how they finance it. And I, I think that we, as a board, should support the good design that they put in front of us, you know?
But then again, though, our comp plan does say there should be an affordable aspect to large-scale developments. But I don't know about a hundred percent. I mean, ten percent, right? Right. I don't think a hundred percent is reasonable.
So help me with this again. Are we going to add a percentage as a condition or leave it as it's?
I would agree to anything fifty percent or below myself.
Okay, let's, let's stick with that.
Fifty percent.
Okay.
All right. Minimum of fifty percent of housing.
Would meet the need, would meet the need of eighty percent or less of AMI.
Okay, and that's doable, right?
And this, we're just talking phase one, correct? We're talking phase one, just to be specific. The apartments.
We're talking about the entire development. The whole thing, yeah.
Well, correctly if I'm wrong, but isn't phase two, i.e. the single-family housing, a totally different program, USDA lending?
It is, but it's still, we're required to serve a percent, eighty percent AMI and below with that program.
Okay.
Okay, all right, let's go.
All right, so we are, that a minimum of fifty percent of housing will meet, say that again.
I know Jerry Smith will ask, so are we saying fifty percent of each phase? Because fifty percent could be met all in the.
Well, that's true, too.
It doesn't make it.
Jerry Smith will ask at the city council meetings, we should just go ahead and put it in there.
Will meet the needs. I'm still with, what did you say it was?
I would.
Meet the needs of the.
Of eighty percent.
I don't much care if it all comes from apartments or all comes from houses or whatever, as long.
As long as forty of the eighty units.
Yes.
Is what you're saying.
Yes, personal opinion.
So you don't want to divide it.
I can't think of a good.
We're going for this. Are you ready?
We trust you, Barbara.
Don't, don't ever. I move, planning board recommend the adoption of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of subject property pin nine five seven nine dash seven four dash oh nine six six from R dash fifteen median density residential to PRD dash CZD, Planned Residential Development Conditional Zoning District, based on the site plan submitted by the applicant. Today's date?
Fourteenth.
March eighth, twenty twenty-two. And presented at this meeting and subject to the following. The development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of permitted uses and applicable conditions as presented on the site plan. Permitted uses and applicable conditions presented on the site plan shall be amended to include that a minimum of fifty percent of housing of each phase will meet the needs of eighty percent of AMI. The, number three. The petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis. And because the business center designation calls for multifamily as the secondary recommended land use and the proposed site plan aligns with some of the development guidelines under strategy LU thirteen point four. Number four. We find the petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing. And because the development addresses the need for affordable housing in two different housing types, the addition of multifamily and single-family residential addresses and ongoing supply need and is in keeping with the surrounding land use, the topography and the presence of a blue line stream at the rear of the site makes a portion of the subject property more conducive for single-family development than other recommended land uses in business center.
We have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a second, but now there was one condition, there was a condition that the tree board recommended that the developer did not agree to, but the developer said that they would try. Is there a way we can incorporate that somehow in the motion? It was the third.
Was the one about the invasives?
No, it was the wetlands.
Some wetlands. So what I gathered from Will's comments and from the current planning committee prior is that the applicant is agreeable to use it as guidance, but did not want to agree to it in terms that it would be required due to the potential, to the unknown and the potential high cost.
So should we, should we make it a condition that they use it as guidance or is that a given?
Do we need to clarify?
I guess my only comment is if you make it a condition to use it as guidance, I, I think that's kind of gray. It's not, it's not real.
It's not a real condition.
It's not a real condition. City attorney would agree with that as well. Measurable, tangible conditions are what we're seeking.
I understand. So we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Good job, Barbara.
Any other business? No other business, and we have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah.